Your life.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, welcome to the April 22nd, 2020 meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, pretty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Item three is public comment. The way we've been conducting public comment in these sessions since, oh, back, I guess, March 26th or thereabouts, or maybe earlier, is as follows. What we're going to do is, I'm going to ask Hillary to unmute all the microphones and then ask anyone who wishes to be heard at public comment to state their name. And if they're on the phone, to give us the last four digits of their phone number so that we can identify them. So everyone should give their name, give the last four, again, if they're on the phone, give the last four digits of their telephone number so we can identify them. And then we'll mute everyone again, and then we'll go down the line of anyone who wishes to speak, and we'll unmute them for the purposes of citizen speak. So hopefully that's clear, clearer than I may have said it, but hopefully it's clear to everyone. So Hillary, I'm going to ask you to unmute all the lines, and then we'll ask for someone, anyone who wants to state their name if they want to be heard in citizen speak. So if you could unmute the lines, Hillary.
Everyone is unmuted now.
All right, so the lines are all unmuted. And I will ask if we have anyone for citizen speak. And I'll just ask one more time, anyone for citizen speak, please, please speak up now. All right, so I don't see anyone, I don't hear anyone for citizen speak, so we will, our public comments. So we will, Hillary, I'll ask you to mute the lines again, and we will move on to item four on the agenda. Let me know when that's happened.
I am ready.
Again, mute all the lines except for the members and for Mike Dennehy. And also, so item four on the agenda is our COVID-19 update. And the first update that we're going to have, as we've been doing for the last month and a half, is to get an update from Caroline Canceler, our Public Health Director. So Hillary, if you could unmute Caroline as well.
Go ahead, Caroline.
Thank you, Hillary. Thank you, Chair Zulus and Select Board members. Today Milton has a total of 125 residents who have tested positive for COVID-19. I'm updating the confirmed positive numbers daily and posting it on the town of Milton website. The Health Department has been reaching out by phone to residents, asking a series of questions to collect data and interviewing cases to identify symptoms and close contacts. So what we are finding is that most of the residents who have tested positive have recovered. That's good news. Some residents have moderate symptoms which lingered, or they were hospitalized and then discharged. And some residents, a handful, less than five, have succumbed to the virus. And these residents were over the age of 60. I also wanted to report that Governor Baker has instituted a community tracing collaborative called CTC. And the state is hiring close to 1,000 people to assist the local public health departments fill capacity. These contact tracers will be reaching out by telephone to assist with isolating and quarantining of positive COVID-19 cases. So this new collaboration with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and Partners in Health will help to ease the burden of cases on the local health departments. Here we have been overwhelmed with cases these past few weeks, and it has been a challenge. Partners in Health is a global health, non-governmental organization that has 30 years' experience and currently works in 11 countries. It's rolling out now, and 25 communities are on board already, including Boston, Worcester, and Brockton. All local health departments will be enrolled by April 30th, and the start date for Milton is May 1st. The call center will be open seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this program is no charge to municipalities. High priority cases will remain with the local boards of health department, such as complex cases, congregate settings, and clusters. The Health Department is continuing to message residents to stay home and call their primary care doctor if they become ill. And we're working with M A T V and Michael Lynch and his staff to continue public service announcements. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. It is tragic to learn that we have lost some members of our community to this virus.
Yes.
And I'd like to ask all of us just to take a moment to, to take a moment to think about those people that we've lost. Thank you for that. Caroline, as you know, if there's anything that we can do, anything that you're seeing that we can act on, as always, please let us know. We're going to have, obviously, continue to do what we can on this. Are there any questions or comments from any of the members of the board? All right, Caroline, thank you. And appreciate all the effort that you're making and all the effort that your department is making. And you all have, you know, surely stepped up in a big way on this, and the whole community appreciates it, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair Zulus and Select Board members. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. So under the COVID-19 update, something that's come up since Sunday is an update on what we might be able to do with town meeting and a, perhaps a virtual town meeting. So Hillary, I'm going to ask you to unmute Bob His, who is our town moderator, along with the members, Bob His, who's our town moderator, Sue Galvin, who's our town clerk, Frank Schroth, who has been involved in this effort most recently. And Bob, is there anyone else on the call that you have on this, other than Sue and Frank?
No, it would be the, these three.
Okay.
Perhaps Mike Dennehy, because he's been contacted by town administrators of some other RTMs.
Yes, and Mike's always unmuted anyway, so Mike and the members, he's.
There's no mute, they can hold him.
Exactly, that's exactly right. All right, so, so I guess the best course is, Bob, you've, you sent us an update on, on Sunday, I believe it was, on some of the possibilities that we were looking for, looking to on a virtual town meeting. Maybe if you could, if you could kind of give us, give the members an update so we can address this, that would be helpful.
Sure. So the legislation that I think Susan Galvin received and that Mike received, Mike Dennehy received, has now, I believe, exited committee and gone into the State House. And so it's an act that would allow representative town meetings to operate with a virtual town meeting with one of two approaches. Either by phone with a roll call vote on, on all the articles, or by adoption of an electronic medium such as Zoom with electronic voting, as long as the votes were all recorded. So that was drafted in assistance with the Legislative Committee of the Mass Moderators Association, many of which are staffed by representative town meeting members. So that's working its way through. If that were approved, that would provide the legal ability for RTMs, representative town meetings like Milton, to participate. So I contacted the 33 representative town meeting moderators in the state. We got a committee of about eight of us, who are interested in working on this. And the individual that's out front happens to be the moderator of Brookline. And so I've had in-depth conversations with him and some of the others, just to read out of some of the decisions they've made, because it looks like they're going to go forward with this. I think they're going to do it whether the legislation passes. It becomes legally difficult. If it doesn't pass, and legally simpler if it does. So what they've chosen is a Zoom meeting approach, using a polling feature for voting that I don't see enabled on ours right here, but is a feature within Zoom that really is a vote. They picked Zoom because it had the ability to segregate out the elected members, who are elected town meeting members, from participants. For example, it could be town officials who want to need to answer a question, or citizens who are registered voters that wish to speak, which, you know, was one of our traditions. It also allows direct access into the cable access systems. So for example, Mike Lynch could display on his TV system what is, what the, all of the meeting participants are able to see. It would require some staff. We're working out some designs and processes. There would be a registration to make sure that people landed up in the right pool. So elected town meeting members end up in the voting pool, other participants up in the non-voting pool. There's a lot of details to work out. How do you raise your hand? How do you mute everyone? How do you let a point of order come in when everyone's muted? How do we make sure we record all the votes, et cetera? So what I spoke to, I spoke to Frank Schroth, who was doing some, a lot of work researching various options. I wanted to thank him publicly. He researched a number of different technologies. He's agreed to serve as a chair of a committee I'd like to form to formally investigate this. And the thought I have is, we do have a bunch of IT individuals that are pretty savvy here in town. They're on the IT Study Committee right now. And so I'd like to draft them into participate in this effort. Also get some support from IT officials in town, whether it's people that are on Jim Segroy's staff or Mary Gormanley, people on your staff. Because we will need things like help desk for members. We're going to need training sessions, probably precinct by precinct, because we've got 279 people plus to get trained. We've got to work out all the details of how the meeting mechanics would physically operate, run some dry runs, and then train up the precincts, and also train up the new members who would get elected in the election that occurs right before the January 4th, I'm sorry, the June 14 meeting day. So those are, that's the thinking, the logistics, some of the feedback. I'm going to keep meeting with the other mass moderators that are on this committee weekly. We're going to share best practices. And we believe we'll have a way to go forward with this approach. For example, should the restrictions by the governor not be lifted in time for June 14 town meeting?
Questions or comments from the members?
I have a question. This is Katie. Bob, would this be a fallback alternative to, say, a meeting in a large place like the fieldhouse that we talked about previously? Or would this be your preferred method of handling it if the governor does sign this legislation?
I think if, if I look at it now, I mean, if the governor said, "We've got the all clear, and you're all free to go congregate," my sense is, people may still be uncomfortable, and it's probably unlikely that the governor would, we'd want to put it in a place like the high school auditorium. We probably could put it in the fieldhouse and not deal with weather. And imagine it's 30,000 square feet. Think about 300 people would need to fit in there. We could probably get 10-foot distancing within the fieldhouse. We might have members that are still nervous. And I'm wondering if, if they just canceled schools, they're going to be out through, we were going to go June 25. I'm doubting the governor is going to lift the restriction on meetings. It would have 300 people inside a school. So the only other alternative, we could try it outside. You're weather dependent. I've had a lot of warnings from folks that have run big meetings outside. You get wind, you get literally critters running on the field, bees, I mean, all kinds of issues with having a, you know, a multi-night potential outdoor event. So the only other way to do it, except for the virtual approach, would, for example, be to move into the high school and spread out across classrooms, like open town meetings do. But then you're, you're still into the social distancing challenge. So when I look at all these issues, members being uncomfortable, unlikely the governor is going to lift it by June 14, if they've already, if he's, you know, closed the schools through mid-June. I think the, if the Select Board wants to go forward with a town meeting, I think the virtual one would be the most reliable one, and the one that would make most of our citizens and members comfortable. So I'd put it forward as our first choice, unless you decide you're comfortable going forward, for example, with the 1/12 budget approach that's available to you now, based on the recently passed legislation.
Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
Would part of the research on this include reaching out to at least some of the town meeting members?
Yes. One of the best practices is survey them all.
Thank you.
And that would include, you know, their comfort with it. What type of technology do they have? Desktop, laptop, smartphone, cellphone, home phone, email address, some of those things. And, and by the way, the, one of the provisions that the legislation survives as it's written is the very first vote in this virtual town meeting.
How about a new number one person?
A virtual town meeting.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part because someone was speaking.
The first vote under this act of the virtual town meeting is for the members to approve holding a town meeting. So we could do all this, and now that's one other reason to go survey them, assuming that we get survey results, said, "Yes, I'm comfortable with this." That they would then approve to go forward, but theoretically they could deny it, and we can no longer hold the virtual town meeting.
Right, right. Okay, yes, I really thought everyone should be contacted, but didn't, didn't know how practical that was, so thank you, Bob.
Susan Galvin has email addresses for the vast majority, not all. And so we may need to do mail with her assistance in order to make sure we cover everybody and register them.
Other, other comments or questions from the members?
I have another question. This is Katie. Bob, if we were to do the 1/12 budget approach, and I'm just asking, I'm not advocating for this at this point, how quickly into the new year would we have to have the town meeting?
I mean, a live town meeting?
Yes.
In the traditional format?
Well, well, I guess in any format, but preferably in the traditional format.
I'm not in detail familiar with how long you can run the 1/12. That may be a question for Kevin Freitag as counsel.
Why? Well, I believe, I believe the Department of Revenue has said that you can receive extensions month by month, if I, if I read the guidance correctly.
Yeah, so I know what we can do is, for example, once the Select Board announces the warrant, then the new legislation that has been passed is that the moderator can then declare up to a 30-day recess while we're in this public health emergency. And the 30-day clock starts with each announcement of the recess, where before it started from when the, the warrant was initially published. So for example, if you release the warrant, let's make it up, May 15, and we get to June 14, and for some reason decide we can't hold it, you know, I could declare recess on June 12, out as far as July, I suppose, 10. And we could keep hopscotching our way forward like this, as long as I think we, as a collective group, thought that you can continue to run under the 1/12 budget.
Right, and we have to get that sanctioning. I always, the Department of Revenue would tell us whether we can use another 1/12 each month. That's the way I read the guidance on, on the budget. I could have read it wrong. You're right, Kevin should weigh in, but that, that's how I, I read it.
By the way, the other discussions I'm seeing with the mass moderators is the interpretation of, there's some phrases like "other available funds." So one thing I'd encourage the board to look at is, which funds are legally interpreted and available to you as other available funds? For example, is free cash, that you have declared as free cash this fiscal, an available fund for you, et cetera?
Other comments or questions from the members? Katie, do you have something?
Yes, yeah, just one other question, Bob. And I appreciate all the effort that you and Frank and others are putting into looking into these issues. How long do you think before we would know whether logistical issues that Frank and his committee will be looking at are insurmountable, or whether we think we can work with them? Because we're, we're right now looking at the warrant going to print in the next, I guess, probably in the next two or three weeks. And it would be good to have a sense of whether we think this is going forward, or whether we think there might be a lot of issues that might require us to look at the 1/12 budget approach.
If I perhaps do a live consult with Frank and Sue Galvin. So if we thought that step one is to draft up a kind of an announcement to the members and a survey, and start to gauge the reaction of the people who are going to vote on this ultimately, and really, we have to, I mean, there are user communities, so to speak. Frank, Susan, do you think within two weeks we could come back and have some results that said, "Here's what the members think"?
Yeah. Susan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that that's a reasonable timeframe.
I want to. So, Bob? Go ahead, Sue.
So provided we get the, get the information out to the membership soon, you know, you know, by Monday at the latest, I would say.
Frank, did you have something?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, but what I, I wanted to also mention, Mike, is just reiterate that this is largely going to be a testing and training exercise. And to that end, I think that Zoom has been identified as the most likely technology platform that would satisfy the bulk of the requirements. But we're going to have to get a license, and we're going to have to test a number of things, not the least of which would be the polling capability, which is obviously a critical component. And we also have to be able to test the scale. So to, so to address Katie's point, if, you know, we, we should be relatively confident, if, within, say, two to three weeks, that that can be done. But we do need to, to spend some time vetting this platform for this particular implementation of use.
Yeah, I would support what Frank is saying. As a data point, one of the mass moderators is a member of the Democratic State Committee. They recently held a 400-member Zoom meeting for four hours. And this guy's been a moderator for a number of years. He said it really ran in a very similar fashion to the way town meetings run. And so he's sent to us the whole user experience design of how they set up this 400-person meeting so we could leverage it, including help desk, training. They voted in a way we may not like, but they, they got voting done, amendments, et cetera.
So, so we had some discussion before, Bob, about if we had to go forward with a virtual town meeting or an outside town meeting, or some alternative, that perhaps we, you know, have a skinny down warrant for that purpose. And then subsequently, we would review the balance of the articles when things improve, perhaps late July or early August, or sometime in August. Is it the recommendation or the thought of the, of the three of you that whether we do, and this is, this is actually a pressing decision for our board, because we're going to have to get a warrant to the printer. And the question is, what does that warrant include? Do we go ahead with the full-blown warrant that we were intending? Or do we skinny down that warrant to the absolutely, absolute critical articles, primarily budget, and then anything else that may be critical? Is that something that we should do? Again, knowing that the decision on that is pressing within the next, probably within the next two weeks, what we're going to include in the warrant? Is that the way we should go, regardless of whether we're going to be virtual or we're going to be in the, in the fieldhouse?
That's the strong advice of the other moderators that are designing these meetings, is they are working with their select boards and their warrant committee equivalents to skinny this down to the, the things you think are essential to operate the town, the new fiscal. Now, I know your other constraint is Susan has two elections coming, September and November, so she's up against the wall when we get to the Labor Day timeframe, even August is, I understand. But.
Yeah, pretty much.
Reunited four hours each, that could be a lot of virtual town meeting.
Sue, I would agree with that.
And in terms of the, to, to conduct a town meeting during that time period, the state is working on some legislations that may change the look of the September primary and the November election, which will garner a lot of efforts from my department. Typically, to prepare for an election, you're talking, we would be starting mid-July to prepare for the September 1st primary. And if we are still in this state, or a modified part of this, this state that we're in, I don't know what, what effect that will have on my staff and myself in preparation.
Sue, I had in my head that maybe we could do a subsequent town meeting, as long as we did it by August 15. Is that, is that, is that, is that wrong? I mean, is it, is it, is that too aggressive even to think if we, we had a, a subsequent town meeting by, by August 15, that still would, it wouldn't work with the, the burdens on your department?
I, I mean, obviously, I'm going to do whatever's going to work best for the town. So if August 15 is the date, we'll make it happen. Is it, is it going to be tough on my staff? Probably. But certainly, whatever, whatever your board decides, and, you know, whatever's going to be the best interest of the town, that's what we should go with.
Well, we obviously wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, do anything without consulting with you, so it's just, which, as, as we try to figure out, because if we set, if we decide we're going to skinny down the warrant for June 15, June 14, it seems to me we would have to make a decision for a date, at least a plug date, for the subsequent town meeting to review the additional articles. Even if that date ended up getting pushed out, seems to me we need to, we need to pick a date after that, when we think we're going to handle the, the balance, the articles. So, so that was really the purpose, so we could kind of have a, a timeframe. But we'll work with you on that, and, and, you know, if the answer is, it's not feasible to do it anytime in August, then that's the answer, and we'll, we'll figure it out. But, but that's what we're trying to, that's what we're going to have to decide. We're going to have to decide, one, if we do a skinny down warrant for June 14, what's the date for, at least in my view, what's the date for the subsequent meeting? At least, at least the plan. Other comments or questions from the members? All right, well, I think, Bob, I appreciate it, and Frank and Sue, we all appreciate all your effort on this. It seems like we're, we're starting to get some form to it. And, and I, I think it's fair to say, are you looking for some direction or consensus or thought from the members on whether we think this virtual town meeting is worth pursuing?
I am. For example, if you have decided you want to go forward on the 1/12 process, you know, we can stand down from this. That's, that's why I'm looking to see what your current thinking is.
Okay, so I don't know that we need, oh, go ahead.
Just one other last thought on the, on the notion of a pared-down warrant. The other, and it's more a technical issue than anything, but as I mentioned, it's training and testing, right? To the extent that a virtual town meeting in June 15, if that's the direction we go in, we'll learn a lot from that. And it goes without saying that that will not be the kind of town meeting we want, but it might be the type of town meeting we need. And that we will learn a lot from that. And subsequent, if, if it should become necessary to have to do that again, I think we will have learned enough to be able to handle the type of debate and, and interaction that is common to a, to town meeting. If I'm, if I'm making sense there?
You made a lot of sense, Frank, made a lot of sense, as you always do. So, so I don't know that we need to take a vote on this, but I think, Frank, I mean, I think Bob is looking for the general view of the board members here. And I don't know if anyone wants to lead off with their views. I will, Katie, do you want to lead off on this, or?
Yeah, I'm happy to share my thoughts. I was swayed by what Bob just said, that if, if one of the moderators is able to hold a, he said Democratic State Committee meeting with 400 people on the line, that's, that's comforting to know, that a meeting that size can be handled. in a, in a reasonable manner and, and the votes were able to be taken and there were no problems with it. So Zoom is new for all of us, definitely new for me, but the calls that I've been on have had a lot fewer people than 279 town meeting members. So my only concern was that it might be difficult to do a meeting, even with a skinny down warrant, to do a town meeting with that many participants. It sounds as though we have some good people looking at a lot of the incidents and we'll have a lot of guidance from the moderators association. And from our own research and our own IT folks and Frank Schroth and Bob's, Bob His and Susan Galvin looking into this. So if, if Bob and Frank and Sue come back and say that they think this is going to work, I'm in favor of doing it that way rather than the 112 budget.
Other thoughts? Melinda, do you have something on that?
Um, well, I think Katie basically said it all. I'm not comfortable with the 112 budget, given the uncertainty and economic outlook. I just think that would be irresponsible at this point. And I, I, I take to heart what Frank said about using a pared-down warrant as a learning experience. And it sounds as if there are people ready to give town meeting members the support they need, and I really appreciate that. So, yeah, I don't think the governor is going to lift anything, so I don't think we really have much of a choice.
Richard, did you want to weigh in on this?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with you. Just one of the comments, I had a great conversation with Rep. Driscoll two days ago, who was, you know, was on the co, one of the main COVID legislative committees. And one of the things that he told me that they're going to be pushing is that we should prepare for this type of operation long-term. As you know, there's a lot of talk that next fall could be worse. And that the more we, look how much from our first Zoom meeting, I mean, it's, there's actually three Zoom meetings going on at my house right now. The more that we get used to this, it's like riding a bike. And to, to the moderator's point, to Bob's point, I think we'll be able to do this. I mean, one of the, Joe, Mayor Creditone's Zoom meetings on Sunday is 150 people and it goes off flawlessly. So I think that we have to rely on this. And I think anything at all that we try to bring any groups together is going to have some consternation right now. So I, I think it's a good thing, Chris. And I agree, my point to you is that whatever consent agenda that the moderator can get together, that we could do virtually, I think makes it a lot easier. So that let's say if it's late July or August, that we do come together. And that we've had some feeling of normalcy a little bit, because I think if we rush it, no one's going to say normalcy's back and just like that, it's just not going to happen. So I think the more that we perhaps walk in towards normalcy, I think the greater likelihood that when we do come together, however or wherever it is, that our moderator will have a quorum, a, you know, a quorum, I'm sorry. So that's my thoughts on it. But thank you, Bob and Frank, and for all your efforts on this. It is a different world that we live in, but we just have to continue to operate like this.
Tony, did you want to, you want to weigh in on, on, on your view on this?
Well, I, I tend to agree that less is more. And I think that if, if our early iterations of Zoom meetings, you know, holding select board meetings or any indication, you know, it takes a couple of instances before people really get the hang of this and, and, and reach a level of comfort. And so, so I think less is more. And to the extent, Bob, that you're able to do this and it's not too much of a burden to you, I, I think I recall you using the term dry run. You know, if we're able to do like a practice session a few days before or a week before town meeting, I think that that has some value. And I think that, you know, a lot of people would participate. And I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I think that will be critical, Tony.
And I also think, for, for what it's worth, people are becoming more and more familiar with Zoom. And for all we know, by the time we hold town meeting, everyone's going to be a pro at it. Who knows? But, you know, as Katie mentioned, you know, select board meetings with, you know, single digits to a dozen or two dozen people are one thing, but you know, you, you start getting up into the, the dozens and the dozens and the hundreds. And who knows, this might actually increase the turnout of town meeting participants. You know, and you could have more Zoom participants than you would have people, you know, physically attending as, as we're accustomed to. So who knows? But I, I think less is more, so.
Mr. Chair, this is Richard. Again, I have a question directed to you.
Oh, yeah.
So, so a resident has just texted me and asked if you would explain what the 112 budget is.
So the, and, and, you know, I, I don't want to butcher it. I, you know, Melinda may know more about it than, than I do. What the legislature is, 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 I understand it has passed a, a statute, emergency statute to allow municipalities, if they are unable to enact a budget before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, then they can proceed under a 112 budget based on last year's budget. So they would, so the, the, the amount that would be approved would be one, a, a, a pro rata, 112 budget of the prior year. So that's what you'd be, that's what you'd, that would, that would be what would be approved absent some kind of town meeting. Linda, have I got that right?
Yeah, I, I think so. Mike Dennehy can, can, can back us up there or correct us if that's wrong.
And I just have one more thing for you, and this is more for, for the moderator. I mean, perhaps as an, as an orientation to town meeting members on Zoom, perhaps we set a date of like, you know, one in May, one in June, just to have, we don't have to have an agenda, just an introduction by the moderator and get people onto it. Maybe even sooner, because one of the things that we see, or that I've seen in people that haven't been on Zoom meetings the way that we are constantly now, that when they get onto the first one, they enjoy the socialization of it. Maybe our town meeting members will just, just sort of, I mean, we could have it a couple of them without even agenda, just an informative from the moderator, here's where we're going. I mean, there's no, so Mr. Schloss, to Frank's point, I think it's probably smart of us to invest in another license or two, because as I said, I think we're going to be in the Zoom business for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. And, 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 you know, I'll say, right now, we are, we are acting under the good graces of MPEC. And in this, in this emergency and their Zoom capability, but but obviously, Richard, as you point out, going forward, we're going to have to do something more. Let me add to the consensus, Bob, on this and say that I am fully in support and favor a virtual town meeting option. I think we're going to have to go that way. And I think it's going to be incumbent on, incumbent on our board, select board, to skinny down the warrant to those things that are absolutely necessary, that will allow town government to function. And then to select a second date when we, to work with the clerk's office and, and to select a second date when we hope we can have a more fulsome town meeting. So that's, I, I think you have, I think you have a consensus from the board on that direction.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have one more question.
Tony? Yep.
Uh, and this is open to, to you, Mike, as the chair, Mike Dennehy or, or Bob. Might it make sense to include some very, very rudimentary and basic instructions as to how to join the Zoom meeting? Not drill down to the actual ID and the password, but the basics of Zoom in the warrant itself when it goes to print?
Yeah. That, I think that's, Bob, I, I, I think that's a good idea. It's, we haven't done it before, but I think it's a great idea.
You know, for example, the, what, before you answer, Bob, like, for example, the one thing that people don't realize if they're using it for the first time is, is they really need to mute themselves. Otherwise they become a distraction. And I've learned that the hard way myself, as you all know, from a few weeks ago. So, I mean, even something, a simple instruction like that, just print it on the warrant, I think would, would really accomplish a lot.
Uh, just a note. If you were to put that in there, that would be, I think, an instruction for the citizen to join. I think we'll have a separate set of user instructions for the elected town meeting members.
Okay.
Because we're going to need to segregate them into different pools so that they can vote while the citizen cannot.
That's a good point.
So put the citizen in mind, not the town meeting member, if you're ever going to do that.
It's very, very nice of you, Tony, to, 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 to point out the fact that we can all learn from you. All right. So I think, I think absent any other comments or questions on this, I think, I think you have a direction from the board. The board knows what it needs to do in terms of the warrant, I think, and, and any subsequent town meeting, work with the clerk's office on that. So other than that, do you need anything else, Bob or Sue or Frank, from us?
No.
I think we're good to go.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work. And it's, it's going to be a new experience, but, but I have every, we have every conference, you're going to make it happen and make it happen well.
We're living in interesting times. We'll, we'll figure this out. All right. Thanks, all.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy.
Hillary Waite, who has become our subject matter expert for Zoom, has.
Oh, Mike, Mike, you, 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 you got.
Oh, sorry. Hillary Waite has, who has become the subject matter expert on Zoom, has put her hand up and would like to help with that committee.
Great.
Done. Thank you, Hillary, wherever your hand is.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. All right. Well, if, if there's nothing else, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Hillary. We'll move on to item five. Hello? Oh, with apologies to the school building committee and, and making you all wait. But I see from that committee, and I'm going to ask Hillary to unmute as we go along, Ada Rose Marin, Carrie Hurley, Glenn Hoffman, Mary Gormly, Glenn Pavlicek, Scott Terrasack, Elizabeth, which is, I think Betty White. I don't know, Carrie, is, who else might be on this call? We have a couple of phone numbers here that I don't recognize. Who else might be on this call? From that one, I'll give you the list again if you didn't get it.
I can see most of the people. From our committee, the folks that I, I see one phone number that I'm not certain who it is. So it could be Aqua Yvonne, or it could be, we have Shawna Wark and Tim Lombard would be the other members that would be just observing. We only have myself, Ada, Scott and Glenn, Glenn Hoffman, not Glenn Pavlicek, presenting tonight. So, outside of that, I, I, I wouldn't know of anybody.
All right.
I know Ada, you've been kind of organizing this. I don't know if you're expecting anyone additional.
No, everyone we're expecting is here.
All right. So we'll, so we'll turn it over to.
Before we get started, I'm going to do this matter, so because this relates to a project that's going to be bonded. And I work with the Towns Bond Council. So I thought what I would do is just turn off my video and unmute my line, but I'm going to stay so I can listen to the meeting. That way I'm technically removed from the room, but I can at least hear the discussion and know when to come back in. If that works. Hillary, if I, if that doesn't work, I'll just sign off and then you can text me when they come back. Thank you.
All right. I think we can do that. I think we can do it that way. So Ms. Gonnlin will be signing off. And we will turn it over to Carrie Hurley. And I'll just ask the members of the, of the school building committee who are unmuted. If you're not talking, it's helpful to mute your line because, because of the background noise. But we're going to, you know, keep you unmuted so you can participate. So I will turn it over to Carrie, I guess, I guess Carrie, right?
Yes, I'll, I'll kick it off and then it's going to move along.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Chairs of the List. Thank you to the Select Board. I appreciate the time tonight. This is kind of a tough act to follow when we're talking about COVID-19 and how it affects our town and a lot of people on this call. So, you know, I do want to acknowledge that we appreciate that, you know, talking about building a school in the town of Milton during all of this does feel a little out of, out of turn, but we have been trying to patiently, you know, wait out kind of the emergency piece and, you know, be respectful of everybody's time. And I, I do want to point that out, that we acknowledge that, you know, it, it's difficult to talk about this right now, but it is one of those things where, you know, we've been charged, we, we were put together in February of 2019. Here we are, April 2020. We've been working very hard as a committee to study the enrollment data, to, you know, see what's going on in the schools, meeting with principals, you name it. We've been very busy. And, you know, ultimately we find ourselves here, which is we're getting ready to put in front of you the request to apply for funding through MSBA and our statement of interest. And, you know, the deadline was extended. We were originally prepared to speak in March. We, we were scheduled to meet with the school board, Select Board, March 11th. And, you know, here we are today, getting ready to submit the SOIs due May 6th to the Mass School Building Authority. And prior to this, we went to the school committee on February, February the 26th, I believe. And we made our presentation and received unanimous approval of the submission. So here we are tonight, coming to the Select Board for your approval of our submission. And something that I want to point out is that this submission does not mean that we're signing up to build anything. We are merely putting ourselves in the queue for the ability and to get funding for a project. There's no guarantee of acceptance by the Mass School Building Authority. And there's no commitment by the town in fight, to filing an application for funding to the MSBA. So, um, we are really, the reason why we feel that it's still relevant and timely for us to move forward with this, even in the face of all of the other things going on in our unprecedented circumstances, is that this is essentially our way of keeping ourselves in the queue to be able to go for funding. And, you know, regardless of what's going on, regardless of schools being closed, we still are in a situation where our schools are overcrowded. Now, it, it feels weird talking about that day after everybody's, you know, staying home for the rest of the school year. But it, it still remained, the fact remains. And, you know, we're in a, in an interesting economy. It's going to be, you know, a wait-and-see type of situation. It's similar to all the folks out there that are applying, you know, for the Small Business Administration PPP loans. You don't necessarily need them now, but you will probably down the road. And everybody's doing it preemptively. And I think that's what we're trying to do here is keep ourselves relevant, keep us in the mix. We don't have the luxury of waiting this out from a, the perspective of, you know, if we want to figure out the situation in the schools, which our recommendation is that we build a new elementary school, we need to act now because it's a very long timeline. And it's a very long process. We've done kind of our research, our, our supportive fact-finding to get us to this point. But even with the submittal of this statement of interest to the MSBA, there's still their whole process that we have to go through, which also, once again, will require us to vet our practices, to talk about enrollment again. And who knows what the situation will bring? I mean, we could find ourselves where, you know, we, we kind of have a general idea of how the enrollment projections look now. But you throw in there an economy where a lot of people are unemployed and you may have, our projections may, you know, go through the roof based on people pulling their kids out of private school and putting them into public school. So, you know, we feel an obligation to the town to move forward with this and keep pressing on. And, you know, I, I think it's important to preface this whole conversation with that because I know people are concerned about the relevancy in, when the situation we're facing now, but we've given it a lot of thought. We've held off and, you know, waited on this presentation as long as we possibly could. But here we are tonight. We have some terrific members of our committee that are going to walk you through the process. Scott Terrasack is. Scott Terrasack is, he's up next. We have Ada Rose Marin, who is also on the School Committee. And we have Glenn Hoffman. And, you know, I do have to step back and thank all the folks that have helped us to get to where we are right now, being able to even have the Statement of Interest. It's been, it's a huge lift. You know, Superintendent Gormley, Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek, all of the school elementary principals. You know, we've had input from the School Committee. We, you know, we've had a lot of people work with us to get all of the information that we needed together to be able to present you tonight. So I'm going to hand this off to, I believe it's Scott that's up next, to go through the MSBA process. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. If you could scroll ahead to the third slide, please. There we go. Back one more. Perfect. So a little bit about the MSBA process, for those of you who may not be familiar with it. It's to reinforce what Carrie said, it's a it's a long process. If it all goes well, it's at least five years before when you start the process from when you started to when you actually can finish the process with a new school. So we've we started the online submittal process, which is the MSBA on their website has a place where you can fill out the submission forms. That's all been completed, and I believe it's been sent to the Select Board at this time. The process begins with submitting that for approval. And really, all the SOI is is we're asking them for the potential for funding, to review us further, to give us funding down the line for a new school or renovation. Originally, it was due in April. It's been pushed back to May 6 now. That's why we're in front of you today to to get approval. Once we do submit it, once we have your approval and we submit it in May, there's a little bit of a due diligence period by the MSBA where they'll review all the submissions that they get for the year. They'll conduct site visits to make sure the submissions are in line with what they actually see themselves at schools. Then they'll make recommendations to the Board in the December timeframe of 2020. And then the Board votes to get you into the next phase of the project, which is the eligibility period. If you can go to the next slide. The eligibility period is approximately 270 days. It can be less than that. And there are certain criteria that you need to, you need to meet during that period. As part of that period is when is the first time that we would need to ask for funding. So that would be the May timeframe of next year. And that period really has to do with confirming the compliance certification, which is confirming we're going to follow the MSBA rules, forming a school building committee, which we already have. But according to the MSBA rules, there's a couple of more positions we'll need to add to it. We have to finish our educational profile. They'll review the maintenance practices. And they'll do their own enrollment projections to help to find the square footage of the school needed. And then it goes, then they'll need a vote, or they'll need confirmation from the town that the town is willing to go forward with it. And then we can go ahead and execute a feasibility study with them. And that only puts us into July of next year. And then the process continues to go on for years. If you can go to the next slide. This guy outlines the whole, the process as a whole. As you follow this flow diagram, we're we're not even at the eligibility period yet on the left. We're we're looking to move into that by the end of this year. And then as far as funding goes, it would be at the end of that period going into forming the project team, which is next year. And then by the time we're actually looking for funding the project, we're actually a year after that. So that would be the May of 2022 timeframe. Are there any questions related to the the process?
Questions or questions or comments from the members?
We can go to the next slide. So that the Statement of Interest has been completed. We've used the Cunningham School as our representative school. You can't do it as a school district. You have to pick a specific school that you're you're basing it on. So we picked Cunningham as we thought was the best choice. But we filled out the submission forms representing all of the elementary schools and giving examples from all the schools. The two main points of interest that that we've given them that we need a new school is severe overcrowding. So we're we're more than 25% over capacity, which qualifies as severe overcrowding. That's a priority, too. So that's a nice high priority in their mind. And then also Priority Four, which is prevention of severe overcrowding, expected as a result of increased enrollment. As you look at the details and the backup for our explanation of both of these, that they're pretty similar. Number, the Priority Four focuses more on potential increases due to development that could occur in the future. And Priority Two really focuses more on where we at, we are at today. Next, Ada will be getting more into detail about the submission itself.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. So the Statement of Interest is composed of questions that relate to a number of general categories. One, they ask you about what are the existing conditions in your schools? Two, they ask about what have you done so far to mitigate that problem? They want to know about the impact of overcrowding on our educational program. And they want to know about what non-traditional spaces have been converted to classrooms. And I'll walk you through how we responded to those portions. If you go to the next slide, please. So under existing conditions, we talk about our elementary growth, which is really the focus of of our Statement of Interest, is the elementary growth. Since our last school building project, which was completed in 2008, when we had 1,873 students, our enrollment at the elementary level has increased to 2,391 at last count in 2020. So that's an increase of 518 students or a 27% increase. And as Scott mentioned, 25% increase or more is considered severe overcrowding. Our schools were built for 14 strands. And what strands are is how many classes there are for each grade in our four elementary schools. So the schools were built for 14 kindergartens, 14 first grades, 14 second grades, and so on. Currently, we are five classes short of having 17 strands at all grades across the district. So we have expanded the number of classes that we are currently serving. We've carved out spaces in all of our buildings, and you'll hear, and if you've read our Statement of Interest, you'll see all that's been done already to accommodate the students that we already have. And the staff for those classes have have been hired over these years as well. We hired Drummy Roseanne Anderson in the fall of 2018. And between about October of 2018 and January 2019, they conducted an elementary space needs study that looked at both short term and long term options. But one of their findings was that in the long term, based on enrollment projections at that point in time, Milton was going to be short by 26 classrooms in 10 years, so by 2030. And already, going along those lines, we have converted 20 non-traditional spaces into classrooms with five more projected for the next five years. If you could move to the next slide, please. So in terms of measures to mitigate, as we said, we we worked with Drummy Roseanne Anderson to conduct their space needs study. And that really was a great beginning point for a school committee prior to the formation of the School Building Committee. But it helped us to understand our situation better and to look at both short term and long term options. And the the way we we kind of broke out those different options is that the short term options have been under the auspices of the School Committee. And we've been basically converting all of these classrooms and to try to get us to this point. And passing on the long term options to the School Building Committee, which was formed in February 2019 by town meeting. And was formed in late June 2019. And the School Building Committee has been meeting just about every three weeks since July. So and with the conversion of non-traditional rooms to classrooms, one of the things that we're finding is that a lot of those non-traditional rooms are inadequate in terms of size. They're not the size of a regular classroom. There are no restrooms in a number of pre-K and kindergarten classes, which is problematic for that age group. And consequently, there have been a number of adult restrooms that have been converted to be used by students in some of our schools, particularly in the Cunningham Colicott site, where preschools are located and and a large number of kindergarten classes are. And a lot of, there are a number of storage rooms that have also been used as offices. We have had growing class sizes over these years. And we don't have an official class size policy, but the there are guidelines that are used by the administration to guide class size determinations district wide. And what has been done over the years has been to establish a target maximum class size for each grade as as each year moves along. But that is clearly higher than the desired class size. And those those target class sizes have grown over time. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a bit. Same thing with shared overcrowded offices. That's been a definite way to try to mitigate the overcrowding, but it's created issues of its own. And then finally, in this category, votes were taken by both the School Committee and the School Building Committee to build a new elementary school. But as Carrie mentioned and Scott mentioned, the steps, there's a long way to go before that would become a reality. We'd have to go through many of these steps again with the School Building Authority to confirm that we've evaluated the needs appropriately and have come up with a plan that best suits those needs. So can I move to the next slide, please? So the impact of the overcrowding. Our our class sizes have grown. And as as any educator can tell you, increasing class size makes teaching and learning more difficult for teachers and students. It has a negative impact on personalized learning. And classrooms are overcrowded with desks and chairs and and space to to move around. Our cafeterias and libraries, our cafeterias are strained and our libraries are compromised. Cafeterias are crowded with tables. We've brought in additional tables to accommodate the additional children. Noise levels in the cafeterias have gone up. Lunch lines are longer and which has then reduced the time the kids can eat. And as I mentioned, tables have been added. And food services has increased cashiers to help shorten the lines. But still, you know, before school shut down, in particular, we were seeing this at the middle school level, that the students were having trouble finding an available seat in a crowded cafeteria. And it's happening at the elementary level as well. Cafeteria stages are used for classroom instruction, storage and meetings. And our libraries have been carved up. Library spaces are used used by teachers' desks, maker spaces, material storage and other instructional needs that are unrelated to library purposes. And library reception areas in a number of schools, I think in all of our elementary schools, have been converted to offices for multiple non-library staff. We've had a limited ability to develop programs because of our space constraints to enable special needs students to attend school in Milton rather than costly out of district placements. And that's a definite budgetary implication. And in addition to, it would really be best for these students with special needs to attend schools in their hometown. And we would love to be able to accommodate their needs. But beyond the the programs that we already have that are outstanding functioning in our schools now for special needs services, there are other needs that we have not been able to meet because of the space constraints. And it would save the town money to be able to serve those children within our school buildings. It also, the space constraints also limits the district ability to provide special ed services and testing because our special ed staff, the specialists who work in all the different types of services that children need are working in overcrowded offices. And it's challenging for scheduling purposes and for confidentiality purposes to provide those services in that kind of setting. Art and music programs have been compromised by teachers traveling with carts from classroom to classroom. Their storage space has been gobbled up. Their access to art and music materials and kilns has been compromised. And the time of the teachers is taken up moving from one classroom to the next rather than preparing an existing space for art and music classes. And we have, as as many of you know, some beautiful rooms that were designed specially for art and music education. And we would love to be able to have our art and music programs back in those rooms. Computer labs have been eliminated to be used for classrooms. And that's a challenge also for grades three, four and five who take MCAS on computers and have lost dedicated computer labs as testing locations. And for education technology instruction for whole classes. We've we've worked around it. There are there are now Chromebooks on carts that move around the the schools. But it's, again, it's in a time when technology is becoming increasingly important in our educational program. We need, we need those spaces to be restored. Playgrounds have have been overcrowded. And as you all have probably heard about the overcrowding at Cunningham Colicott in particular, there are 1,300 kids that go to those two schools together. And during recess, every day, there are between 210 and 225 students out in a playground throughout the recess period. And they're on a half acre playground that is 90% paved. It's unsafe and it's overcrowded. It's stressful. And it doesn't provide kids with the the real outdoor experience that they deserve and that they need. And as a result of that, the Cunningham Colicott Green Space Project was formed last year and are well on their way to resolving that situation by by developing some new space behind Cunningham Colicott School, which would be wonderful when that's implemented. Restrooms are limited and overtaxed, as I mentioned. In particular, again, at Cunningham Colicott School, it took you adult. In particular, again, at Cunningham Collicott School, too few adult restrooms are there for the number of staff in the buildings. And and as a result of those bathrooms being converted for student use because they're needed. Crowded offices minimize time available for testing and service delivery, as I mentioned before. We have multiple crowded offices at each school. We have up to six desks in some of our small offices. Common planning time has been compromised for teachers because there's no space to meet. Conference rooms have been converted to become offices, so they're unavailable for for group meetings. And scheduling has been challenging, as I mentioned before, for testing and service delivery. Teacher common planning has definitely been compromised with with no space to meet. And just a few more things that are not on this slide, just to mention a couple of others that are in the statement of interest. The nurses office, in particular at Cunningham Collicott School, has been merged from two what was built originally as two separate nurses offices, has been turned into one nurses office that has then been further reduced in space to make room for something else. I don't remember exactly offhand, but this one reduced size nurses office is serving 1,300 students daily in an office that was built for 500. Our Milton Community Schools that provides the before and after school programs for our our students has had a 42% increase in numbers in before and after school programs. They now have waiting lists and they also have limited spaces available for the program that they want to be able to provide for the students that are with them for extended days. And finally, in this category is transportation. There have been increases in the numbers of cars that have been at each site because of the increase in students. We've added additional crossing guards, reconfigured drop off and pickup. But there there's our safety concerns and we've tried our best to address those, but they they remain. And it would be better to have fewer kids at each of these overcrowded sites. And as you've probably heard, we have wait lists for buses at the middle school and the high school. So if we can move on to the the next slide, this next series of slides just show you quickly the space that has already been converted to classrooms or or office spaces in each of our floor plans. And you can see the yellow spaces have already been converted and the white squares are spaces that are scheduled to be converted over the next five years as our short term plan proceeds. So this is Cunningham. Next slide is Collicott School. And then we go to Tucker School. And as you can see, we've already converted a lot of spaces and have have used just about everything we've got and have compromised many of our programs as a result. So now I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Hoffman.
Thank you, Ada. Good evening, the select board members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight. As I get into the expected future increase in enrollment, I think it's important to emphasize the relationship between priorities two and four. As you've heard, you know, many of many of the current conditions described by Ada for priority two will obviously become worse with continued growth of the student population in Milton's four public elementary schools. As you heard earlier, we're already 27% over current capacity. Put that in perspective, we we have the equivalent of five elementary schools being housed in four school buildings. And that's now, you know, today. One of the tools we use for projecting student growth is the NESDAQ index. And we've obviously used that in our studies. And the NESDAQ currently is nearing peak elementary enrollment in the next four years, and we believe it will hold steady until about 2030. There are a few things about the NESDAQ that are a little bit misleading. You know, issue one, as the select board is well aware, we have several housing and 40B projects either currently approved or in the process of being approved in Milton. Safe projections say that we're going to have about 635 new units of housing in Milton, which obviously is going to increase our school enrollment. And that's a big concern. Also, the does it assumes a level birth rate. It does not include student yield of numerous resident construction projects, as I just spoke about. Few other issues that we also talked about is our experience here in Milton is that there's a high level of in high level of in migration of new families that move into Milton. In other words, an older couple or older lady or gentleman will sell their house and typically it's a young family that's buying it. We think that's pretty safe assumption that that's going to continue as we move forward. You know, and we we addressed that with the with the application as well. You know, the young young families that like to purchase the new new homes or rent the new homes that we spoke about that are underway getting built. And I think that just about sums up the future. You know, like I said, most of most of the issues we're concerned with with Level 1.4 are addressed in Level 2. And we're just, as we stated, you know, we're looking at a bad situation getting worse if the population continues to grow as we think it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Yeah, thank you. First, thank you to Carrie and and to Ada and to Scott and to Glenn for the presentation. So comments or questions from the members? And let's see, I can't see you all with the presentation, so.
Mr. Chair, we're going to vote on this. Richard, are we voting on this?
Yes, that we what we'd be voting on is whether to authorize the chair to sign the statement of interest, which would allow the project to proceed to the school building authority.
So for purposes of discussion, I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve you to sign this to move this forward to the master's school building authority.
Yeah, actually, we have a quite a it's actually very specific.
All right, you can read it. I don't have it in front of me. So if you want to read it, it's my motion.
Fair enough. What what I think we may do is make a motion to waive the reading of the motion and to approve the motion as written and to authorize the chair to select to with the select board to sign the statement of interest form.
I'll make that motion. Your words.
All right. Motion has been made.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Melinda. Comments or questions from the members to the school building committee?
I'd just like to say thank you for all the work I read through the documentation and have seen other presentations. And I know it's a lot of work and and a lot of meetings and really appreciate everybody's time, effort and commitment.
I just want to echo Melinda's, but I have one question for any one of you can answer it. We don't know what the percentage would be, what the exact percentage of reimbursement would be. That's something that would be decided at a later time. Like in, as Glenn and Mary know, I don't even know what year it was, in the 2000 and whatever, the 1990s project, we knew what the percentage was going to be. But am I either way too early or we just won't know? Glenn's grinning. I don't get to see Glenn's face much anymore, but I see Glenn's grin tonight.
So Carrie, I don't know if that's for you or another member of the committee on what we when we may know the percentage and what it may be if we if we have an idea?
This is always a question that comes to me, and I'm usually the least equipped to answer it. But I believe that we won't find this out for it's all dependent on, you know, the submittals that come in and the funds available at the time, what they, you know, will allocate for a percentage for our for our project. The funding depends on the total cost of the projects that they approve. So it really is, I can't remember the percentage, Ada, is it 33% that?
Glenn, Glenn Pavlichak.
It's approximately in the mid 30s. It depend there there are different issues that kick in. If you do certain things, you can get extra points and so forth. Suffice it to say, we're nowhere near the the 90% we talked about 18 years ago. But it's somewhere in that ballpark and that's, let's say, the 30s to be safe. And that's, again, it's that's the percentage of the cost that they actually fund. You know, there's certain parts of a project they won't they don't fund at all. So the effective rate turns out to be even a hair less probably.
Other comments or?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the members? All right, so the motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this is going to be roll call vote Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. So thank you. Thank you to the school building committee for all your work, all your effort. This is this is really the first step on the ladder, but it took a lot of work to get there. I understand that you are going to need certified minutes from this meeting, and I and and that is by May 6th, is that right?
We don't need certified minutes. We just need to have certification that the vote took place.
Oh, okay. Certification that the votes took place, and that would come from the clerk's office?
Or? Yes, I believe so. Yeah.
We may we may need to have the minutes voted in order for the clerk to certify that. So we'll just need to make sure we'll make sure that that gets whatever we need to do in order to get that certification from the clerk by May 6th. And my guess is we'll probably have to give her some minutes in order to do that. We'll we'll make sure that we we make that happen before before your May 6 deadline. We've been meeting quite frequently in the last six weeks. And, you know, I think we're probably going to have to add a meeting, maybe not two next week, but perhaps, but my guess is we'll be able to get we will get that done for you before May 6th.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So so and and again, you know, it may be that Tony certified, Tony's the secretary, maybe the Tony certifies, but we'll just have to we'll run that down and make sure we get that we get that for you. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll we'll do our part to get the application.
Appreciate it. And thank you for everything you guys have been doing for the town of Milton. We know that you've been working very, very hard almost every night. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie.
Good night.
Thank you all. Item six, update on the 40B approvals. And this item was, I guess we have this item on for the for the East Milton letter, which has gone in. So the status of the 40, oh, Katie's back. Sorry, Katie. You're back. So over the last week, we've submitted three comment letters, one for Blue Hill Lab, one for Canton Ave, and one that went in just yesterday for the residences at East Milton. Our consultant had recommended that perhaps we we try to get a meeting with Mass Housing to, since we've given them so much material over the last week, to to have a discussion with them. Senator Timmeltie has reached out to Mass Housing and and secured a meeting. And I just it was just confirmed late this afternoon that they are willing to meet with Senator Timmeltie and with with some of us tomorrow. And they're going to meet with, you know, Mr. Dennehy or Judy Barrett, who's our consultant. And if this board agrees, Ms. Collins and I will participate in the meeting. We had previously been charged by the board to meet with the with the proponents of these things, the developers. And so and so I think the the thought was maybe we would participate in this meeting. But this meeting is going to take place tomorrow. It is with Mass Housing, with the people who we submitted these comments to over the last week. And again, the purpose is to try to walk them through and 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 work with them on this process going forward. So that's the update. So I so I think, you know, comments or questions on that?
Is this problem that we authorize chair and the vice chair to take part in the meeting with Mass Housing regarding pending applications under chapter 40?
Negative. I'm second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to note that Judy Barrett had suggested that, since we do have so many letters submitted at this point.
Did I I meant to say that and maybe?
You may have said that, and I may be so tired I missed it, so.
You did. You you said that.
He said that.
Okay. But it but it was a good chance that I didn't, Melinda. It was a good chance because but anyway, yeah, it was a suggestion and Senator Timmeltie jumped right on it and was able to secure the meeting. So we'll we'll have we'll have probably a Zoom, a Zoom meeting with them tomorrow to kind of walk them through what has what has what we've submitted over the last week.
And I think that that I speak for the board when I say I appreciate his time given everything that's going on. And actually, Mass Housing too is doing a lot of work that they don't normally have to do, trying to help people maintain their housing and things. I appreciate everybody's time.
All right, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
All right, item seven, approval of the election and town meeting warrant. We have two warrants. One is for the election on June 9th, and the second is for the town meeting on June, it starts on 40th. I don't have it in front of me right now.
June 15th, Mr. Chair.
15th, sorry, 50th, June 15th. I think I was making that mistake earlier. And we just we talked about that earlier with the with the moderator and the clerk. So the question is, do we want to, do we want to approve the election warrant? And then what anything do we want to do with the town? So why don't we take the?
Mr. Chair, would you do that? Would you put in a two votes? So I'd like to abstain from the election one and then vote on the town meeting warrant one.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they're combined warrants, so there's really only one warrant that we're talking about.
That's, yeah, actually, that's right. So the?
Not the abstain, abstain just that.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that we were, I mean, we had a finance meeting, I should mention, back up, and we had a finance meeting on Monday. We met with the school subsidy, and there was some discussion at that time about extending the budget deadline because we thought we were going to have to go back and revisit the budget. So I know this was on the agenda, which was approving the warrant, and there is a fairly close to final draft that the warrant committee's been working on. But I thought we were going to be talking more tonight about whether we issued earlier about skinnying down the warrant.
Yes, that's exactly right. And so 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 let's have that discussion. And so the question is, what of the town meeting warrant that we have in front of us do we want to go forward with if we can make that the judgment now? I think that we we could probably kick it out another week in terms of the timing, but the earlier the better. The earlier the better for the warrant committee, the earlier the better for the town administration in terms of what we what we think we might include in this warrant. So comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, would you like to do a meeting just for this next week?
Yeah, I I think that makes sense. You know, I can tell you from my point of view, well, Mr. Yeah, I, I, I think that makes sense. You know, I can tell you, uh, from my point of view, um, well, Ms. Collins, did you want to say something?
No, I was just listening.
I can tell you from my point of view, uh, uh, you know, uh, having just the budget items, and then my understanding is, Mr. Dennehy can talk to this, that we need, uh, for, um, for federal regulatory reasons to address the stormwater, um, article before this year. And then also, um, and then also, uh, because of the issue of warrant delivery in this particular crisis, we may want to take the electronic warrant. So, so those are my thoughts right now on, uh, you know, if we're going to skinny down this warrant, that that's what we would focus on for June. Um, and then, um, hold everything else in abeyance until, uh, until the date that we should, in my view, we should set. Those are my thoughts. Other comments, questions?
Chair, I have a question. There was some static on the line. Did you say budget, stormwater, and electronic delivery of the warrants?
Yes, Katie, that's what I said. Budget, um, stormwater, because my understanding is that there are Fed, federal regulatory requirements that, that, uh, that, uh, require us to make a decision on that by June thirtieth. And then electronic delivery, because we're in the, uh, we are, we are in an age right now, we're in a crisis right now that will benefit from electronic delivery. So that's, that's my thought.
I was on a call with, um, with the town administrator and Jennifer McCullough and town council yesterday regarding the electronic delivery of the warrants. Still a couple of small open issues that are being resolved. I, I think they can be resolved in fairly short order, so I would support putting that one forward. The only other one I would question, um, and I don't feel strongly either way about it, is the prudent investment of the trust assets. Because town meeting has already had a discussion about substance of that. Now, I, I looked at the draft, the warrant committee's comment is not correct. It says right now that the, that the trust funds are invested in the S and P one hundred, which is not the case. So we need to clean that up. If we think based on last year's town meeting that that could go forward fairly, without much of a discussion, we may want to think about that. But, but in interest of the discussion we had earlier about carrying the warrant back, I could also see the reason to put that one aside for, whether it's August or later date.
Other comments, Ms. Collins?
Um, well, I, I know that, or I should say, I believe you, you spoke with Cheryl Tagheus the other day, and I wondered what she said about, um, the article for the great estates that affects the, um, the Walcott Woods development, how soon that she felt that needed to go.
So my understanding is that, um, uh, the planning board needs a decision from us early rather than later. Um, and I asked, you know, they're having a meeting, I think, next Thursday. And I, you know, I told her we would try to get her a decision by next Wednesday, uh, about what we were going to do. My, my understanding, and, you know, I don't want to speak for Mrs. Tagheus, we can have her in to talk about it, um, is that if, if we had a subsequent meeting, um, uh, within the next few months after June, that that would work from, uh, from their view. If it waited until January, then that wouldn't be so good. Uh, so, uh, so again, we can have her in, I don't want to, you know, just do it based on my conversation. We can have her in to talk about that, but, but that's my understanding, that if, uh, if we had a meeting in July, early August, that that would be sufficient for their purposes.
Okay, I, I didn't know that. I, I, I knew it couldn't wait till January, but I didn't know how long it could wait. And I, I was just curious, because, uh, as, um, most of the board probably knows, there's a, the issue of a permit that's already been granted, and, um, and that's why that this needs to, to get done. And, um, I just have to say, really thank the warrant committee for their time, Cheryl, and, and, uh, I had a chance to, to speak with them and, um, and provide information they didn't have before, so.
Other, other comments, questions? I, I would say, Katie, I'm professor, I, I think that's going to generate, it generated a lot of discussion last year. And my guess, my thought is it'll probably generate discussion again. And so I would be concerned about including that. You know, I think, I think it may be a stretch to include electronic delivery, even though there's really good reasons to do it. Um, but I think it would be more of a stretch to include prudent investor, that's, that's my thought on that, but.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. I just thought that since we're moving in the direction that several town meeting members wanted to go in last year, that we might have more consensus on it this time, but I understand the reason. So, yeah, I, I think the electronic delivery is more important than that one. For this purpose, for the purpose of the circumstances we're in.
Yeah. And, and I think maybe, given the, the volatility in the market, this might not be a time where people feel confident having that discussion. Um, is that, we, we got really lucky, um, because most of it's in cash right now. And, um, and so we've been able to retain quite a bit of value that, um, that we'd have to wait to come back, but certainly would come back, so.
I agree with Katie and Linda. I think wa, waiting on the prudent investor and moving the electronic delivery, I, I, I would concur with both those decisions.
Okay. Mr. Dennehy, do you have any, uh, thoughts, uh, concerns or, uh, on this? Um, you're going to, you're really in charge of this, I'm interested in what happens.
Uh, no, we, we had a, a very good walkthrough yesterday. Uh, warrant committee clerk, uh, Lynn Hoy, um, Amy Dexter, myself, Chair Asher. And we literally went through, uh, the current warrant, uh, understanding that, um, it's going to go to print a little bit later now that town moving has, town meeting has been moved out. Um, and, and the warrant itself is in very good shape. Uh, we found some grammatical errors, and it, it was a very productive meeting. And I should thank all of them for their time yesterday in doing that. So it, it's ready to go. I would support, uh, anything that goes through. Obviously, the budget is a moving target. Um, and we've got some work to do in the next couple of weeks. Myself and Katie Conlon are joining the Department of Local Services tomorrow, uh, hopefully for a walkthrough along with Vice Chair Collins, um, on what the consensus report could look like. Um, I know this isn't, isn't, I, I can add a lot of it, a lot, a little bit more in my town administrator's report, but, um, that preliminary report will help us guide, um, some of the budget, um, rebalancing that we have to do for FY twenty-one, which will ultimately lead to the, the warrant having to be, um, rewritten, revoted, and reproduced, um, in, in short order and, uh, as, as the information comes.
So, so is the idea, uh, that we're going to revise the budget as best we can based on the estimates, um, that we get tomorrow? And based on the estimates that we have, we'll revise the budget so it's, um, so it's a, a, a budget that is accurate as best we can under the, under the COVID nineteen circumstances. And then we will add to that, sounds like there's consensus that will add to that the electronic warrant delivery and the stormwater articles. And that would be the warrant that we'll go forward with for June. That, uh, that, I don't know that we want to vote that. Well, we don't, we can't vote the warrant out because we don't have the numbers. We don't have the, we don't have the, um, we don't have the numbers on the budget. Um, but it sounds like that's the direction that we should go in.
I would concur. It's the direction in terms of the, what is included in the warrant, but I, I should just point out, you know, there was not really a consensus at the finance, at the joint finance meeting on Monday as to what the approach should be, that the, um, that it's fair to say the school committee, this little subcommittee, finance of committee had perhaps a different view than some of us did. We all were sharing different ideas, and, um, we agreed we're going to meet again next week. But some of us felt we need to revisit the numbers given the financial crisis that we're in. And I think there was some sentiment by some of the participants to go forward with the budget that was approved in February and address any reductions at a later date. So, um, the plan really is on our side to try to make some recommendations in terms of some of the lower hanging fruit, perhaps not funding things like the Oak of Trust, but also visiting the department. And we're, we're going to reconvene next week.
I think, oh, Ms. Collins?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think, I think in general, people though, were coming around to the idea that we would need to revise the budget.
And, and we have a May nineteenth, uh, drop dead date to get, um, the warrant with a revised budget, um, to the printer, I believe. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, uh, twelfth, um, with the drop dead date, with edits back to the printer by May nineteenth to make sure that we have them delivered, uh, in, in time for the, uh, a week before the election, which is, uh, June ninth. We would need to have them in, in residences.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to have to get, get going, we get, um, school committee and, and warrant committee and, um, and our, and our board. Um, all, pardon me, all, um, so we can, uh, we can get some consensus on what, what, uh, what the number should be in that warrant.
So can I ask one last question? Sorry, um, uh, Mike Dennehy, so is there a meeting tomorrow to go over the warrant again, or no?
No, that I move, we, we move that, um, to May eighth, which is the Friday before.
Okay.
Um, twelfth, this is when I would have to go to the printer. I'm not sure if, if Hillary was able to, to change that WebEx meeting, but, um, yeah, no meeting tomorrow morning, um, to go through the warrant because it's going to change, um, slightly or, or more than slightly forward.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, so we'll, uh, we, if we have a meeting next week, which we probably will, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Um, we'll include that again and see where we are, uh, see where we are in terms of, uh, moving along.
Just mentioned, um, on the call with the town administrator and Jennifer McCullough and Kevin Fryte yesterday about the electronic delivery of the warrant, we may need to reopen and close the warrant just for the purpose of changing two or three words in the article. So it's, it's not a substantive change. Kevin Fryte just felt that the words, um, as an alternative to print delivery should be replaced with instead of print delivery. So, um, that would just be a technical change to the article, but we'd have to open and close the warrant anyway to remove articles. Sorry, to remove all of these, so we, we felt that that was probably a reasonable thing to do to change that wording. On the call, obviously, it's subject to the, the rest of the board agreeing.
So maybe we'll try to do that next week, uh, and close the warrant for that purpose and for the purposes, um, you know, removing, um, articles. Okay, uh, item seven, uh, I'm sorry, item eight, acceptance grants to the health department. Uh, we have two, uh, health department grants. So I will ask for motion to approve these health department grants. Very timely.
I move to accept grants of twenty-five dollars from Pastor Shelley Davis and Elizabeth Olson, um, and of twenty-two thousand fifty-two dollars from the Massachusetts Health Officers Association to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, and I believe the health department as well.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, this is a roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms., uh, Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Zulis, yes. Uh, item nine, approval of the Wallston Golf Club change of directors. We received the proposed amendment to the A P C C cap applications.
I'm going to recuse myself because I'm a member.
Oh, okay, all right, so, um, so again, thank you. Uh, so, um, the planning members.
Mr. Chair, I'll move we approve an amendment to the application to A P C C for the change of directors and officers at the Wallston Golf.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? It's going to be roll, roll call vote, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Uh, item ten, and we'll ask, um, oh, there she is, Melinda's back. Item ten, reappointment of the Milton Village Central Avenue revitalization committee. We have a motion on that.
I don't have the members, but I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to reappoint them. I just don't have the name in front of me.
Sure, I'll, I'll fill it in. It's, the, the motion is to reappoint John, and, and I'm going to, I'm not going to pronounce his name well. Does anybody, Zikowicz, uh, John Zikowicz of two forty-five Atherton Street, Chad Lundeen of twenty-three Valley Road, Michael Wilcox of forty-two Hillsview Road, Ruth Hayden of eighty-eight Warf Street to the Milton Village slash Central Avenue Revitalization Committee. Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favorites are all called out, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Zulis, yes. Uh, item twelve, town administrator's report.
No, eleven, eleven, Mr. Chair, eleven deferred.
This one? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Richard. You do have it. All right, great, you caught me, I missed it. Uh, bottom of the page, reappointment of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. You have a motion on that?
Chair, I'll?
I'll make the motion. Go ahead, Katie.
Go ahead, Richard, that's fine.
I don't have the names. I was saying, I, I just have my agenda, I don't have the names.
All right, I'll move that we reappoint Bill Richard at five twenty-five Canton Avenue, John Sheldon, two thirteen School Street, Ellis Cohane of ten thirty-five Rushville Road, Daniel Daley, fifteen Corey Lane, Alyssa Cook, seventy Fearbanks Road, I don't think that's correct anymore. Uh, Teresa Desmond of eight Museum Way Cambridge to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
I think there's a correction on, um, Mr. Chair, there's a correction on Teresa Desmond is in Milton Beck. I just don't have the exact address.
Oh, that's right, she's on Marilyn Road.
Yes, Marilyn Road.
All right, so with those, with the amendments, uh, for the address on Teresa Desmond, uh, Teresa Desmond and Alyssa Cook, uh, motion's been made, and did we get a second on that?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes, Mike.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, yes. Uh, all right, and now we can go to, um, uh, the town administrator's report, item twelve.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. A couple of quick things, um, Milton D P W would like me to reiterate the fact that although things say flushable wipes on them, they are not in fact flushable wipes. Uh, an error system off at the Thatcher Street Pump Station today. Um, I tweeted out a photo of a magnificent clog of wipes that have been accumulating in our sewer system. Um, so I just want to reiterate to those watching and listening, um, not to flush anything down your toilet, toilet paper. Creates a serious problem in our waste management system, and enough said. Um, secondly, I'd like to thank the members of our community for social distancing. Uh, each day I'm taking a ride around, um, looking at beautiful empty parks and playgrounds, unfortunately. But I think, uh, people are doing generally a good job, but we would like to reinforce again that the parks are open only for passive youth exercising and walking, there's no congregating, and the playground, food hockey, basketball, and tennis court structures are closed indefinitely. Um, I'd also like to thank, um, the Milton Firefighters, local one sixteen union. Um, today we memorialized the terms of the temperature-taking memorandum of understanding that we discussed a couple, a couple of meetings ago. Um, so a lot of constructive back and forth with the union to get to this point, uh, and an abundance of caution, um, and, and the need to protect the safety and wellbeings of the residents of Milton, town employees, uh, who work on their behalf. Uh, temperatures are currently being taken, uh, at three intervals on all employees, uh, at all three fire stations when they report to work at eighteen hundred hours and at the end of their shift. So I'd like to thank, uh, Milton Firefighters Local One, uh, one eleven sixteen, uh, for accomplishing this. And lastly, um, just to, to touch upon that conference call tomorrow, we're, we're hoping to get a consensus, a preliminary consensus revenue report from the state, which will help better guide us, um, through the next piece of our, our budget process for fiscal year twenty-one. Um, and purely speculation and just numbers on the back of an envelope, um, just to put it in perspective, a twenty percent, uh, reduction in, uh, consensus revenue, uh, if that should be the number, uh, coupled with the fact that, um, we, you know, obviously we'll see a decline in what we forecasted for meals tax. Our, uh, Board of Assessors and Chief Appraiser have reduced, uh, new growth from seven fifty to six hundred. We could probably see a reduction in our permit fees, et cetera, et cetera. Um, worst case? Worst case scenario from where, where I sit back of the envelope is, is about a $3 million reduction from where we sit today. So obviously more to come and very preliminary, and I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit. But town accountant and I are trying to crunch some numbers and, and come up with some scenarios as to how this will, will impact the town's budget going forward. So more to come on that.
It's $3 million shortfall for FY21, Mike, right?
Yes, yeah, so based on, so right now we have a balanced budget for FY21. We, we would anticipate on the back of an envelope with a 20%, 20% reduction in the consensus revenue from the state. And some other local receipts impacts, a, a $3 million reduction in that from the revenue side.
And that's what's gonna cause us to revise the budget articles for the warrant.
Correct, and that, and this, at this time is, the 20% is a guess on my behalf or our behalf. But this is a best case scenario, if this prolongs into the summer or fall months, we, we could see a much larger impact.
Okay, alright, thanks, Mike. Chair's report, I don't have anything. That's item 13, item 14, members' reports. Does anybody have anything, Ms. Collins? Mr. Farrington.
I don't have anything, thank you, Mike.
Ms. Conlon.
My report, Mike.
Mr. Wells.
Just one point, given that, if any of you have been to Boston or Quincy, especially Quincy. You may notice if you went to any establishments, it's really strictly enforcing masks. One of the business owners grabbed me Saturday, wasn't sure am I supposed to enforce, not enforce. One of the things that both Quincy Public Health and the city of Boston, they've got a very good flyer posted at the entrance to every facility that's open. And I know public health is up to their ears, but perhaps some of the staff in our office might be able to draw up a one-page flyer. They're online, you can find it, just kind of remind people you should have a mask on because this, this one person, his staff gets very nervous when someone doesn't come in without a mask on. So maybe past the night there's something we could go and get disseminated and they'll point them up. He asked me from a guy and said, when I saw them, when I saw how aggressive Quincy's being, and I saw them posted all over Dorchester today, it might just be a good idea for us. I know we're putting out, you know, we're voted, we've, we've, you know, we've put on, but I think when you walk into a place and see it in black and white right on a door, it has an effect. And that'd be all it had.
Mrs. Conlon.
Richard, are those sort of pictorial, because I, I know that those kinds of things are available that you can just print and, and use? Or was it a sign just with words or?
They're definitely from the city, I can't, one is yellow, I think Boston's is yellow with black.
Right.
Quincy's has a big, like a, like a hand, like stop, like stop, you know, do you have a mask on, don't care. Quincy very aggressive, like carry hardware, I was gonna tell you, they won't let you in the building, they're just turning you away unless you have a mask on.
Thank you.
It just makes sense, it just, I think it's just one thing we could do, that we've, we've taken all these votes. It might just help reinforce what our business owners that are functioning, particularly the busy ones, particularly the food ones, it might help them.
So it's a good point, Richard, and, and I was actually gonna raise in future agenda items, whether we want, we had, we, I asked, we asked town council just to take an initial look at some of the mandatory face mask orders that have been, that have been issued by surrounding communities. And the question is, and it looks like in, in most of, most cases, it, it has been Board of Health enforcement.
Yes, they are our Board of Health, you're right.
And to your point, we want to be obviously sensitive to, to any further burdens on our, on our, on our health department. But if the, if the members want town council to put something together in terms of mandatory face masks, we can include that on the agenda for the next week.
I, I, I'm fine with that, you wanna run it by, be, some can run it by Caroline or to Roxanne tomorrow, the next day, and see what they think. There was a very good article in The Ledger on Saturday, which showed that Quincy says right on it, you know, Quincy Public Health right on it. So I get you on that, and I'm not looking to step on any toes, I'm just trying to perhaps help with the businesses that we do have that are open.
If, if, again, if the members think it makes sense, we can go ahead and coordinate with Board of Health and, and our town council to, to see what the best step is. And put it on our agenda for the next meeting. Sounds like the people are in favor of that, nods, and so, so we'll do that, we'll put that, that on the agenda. Richard, as you point out, we'll, we'll reach out to Board of Health and, and Caroline as well.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that, I just think it would help.
Okay, great. Alright, public comment response, item 15, we had no public comment. Item 16, approval of meeting minutes. We have six, I believe, from March 23rd through April 17th. As the members prepared to move forward on that, they will send amendments today that we received. So we should move forward.
I make a motion move them forward, you can read the dates.
Ms. Conlon, did you want to say something?
I just wanted, I mean, I said there were some corrections or clarifications, I guess, earlier today. I don't know if anyone else had other comments, but they were probably mine are the ones I said. So.
I'll do that with her, with Ms. Conlon's friendly amendments or air edits. I'll accept that as a friendly and move that, make that as a motion, approve these minutes.
So I think the motion is to approve the minutes from March 23rd, March 25th, April 7th, April 9th, April 14th, and April 7th.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Zul is yes. Thank you to Hillary Waite, our executive secretary for outstanding work on that. And much appreciated. Item 17, confirming future meeting dates. So our meeting dates in May are subject to our, our, our town meeting, which is now not going to happen. So we need to reset our meeting dates, we don't have a meeting date set for next week, we've been meeting pretty much twice a week. My guess is we should probably meet at least once next week. And, and then going forward, so what is, what do the members think about that?
Next week is fine with me.
Just put them up there, Mr. Chair, fix some dates.
Okay, do, do we wanna, do we want to, so, so here's, the way it's been working in for the last six weeks is we, we met twice a week. We met on a Tuesday, and usually something comes up by the end of the week, so we've been meeting on Tuesday and then either Thursday and Friday. We could set, set meetings for Tuesday, or we could go ahead with our normal Wednesday meetings. And go back to roughly one meeting a week. So.
Chair, I'll ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Wells. Yes, Ms. Wells. Hello, Richard? Richard, you're on mute. Oh, there you are.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Put the button click. Is the fire committee still meeting, are you meeting every Friday, Katie, Melinda, or no?
Monday.
Monday.
Oh, Monday, so I, I'm just thinking, if two members, whatever other meetings are going on regularly, maybe we can tap onto that just. Because it seems one meeting is always, seems to be a shorter meeting, dealing with contemporaneous issues. And this meeting is more our regular meeting with the, you know, the regular business of the board. Just a thought, just because so many people are doing so much, just where, you don't have to go anywhere now, you can do it from right where you are.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll do whatever anyone wants, fine with me.
Good point, it's a good point.
Well, our meeting is Monday, fire committee is Monday, so I think we'll make time to meet that day. And I'm not sure that we'll have anything on Monday that we really would be in a position.
Don't have now.
Might need an additional week.
Right, right. And the housing committee's meeting on Monday evening. So.
So do we, do we wanna, I mean, our, what we've been doing so far is doing Tuesday, and then if something comes up, we have a, a, a meeting later in the week. Do we wanna continue that for next week at, at the least?
It's fine with me.
Good, although if you want to try to get it to one meeting, we can try Wednesday, as you suggested.
E, e, either way.
Do you still want to do seven, like our regular meeting time, or do you want to do the, the odd meeting week earlier? I mean, like we had been, I, I, what does, what do the members think? I'm thinking of you more, of you, Mr. Chair, at 9 o'clock at night.
I like, I, thank you, I don't, I don't look so at this time, you say.
No, no, you're alright.
But no, I, I like the idea of the 5 o'clock for, you know, as Richard suggested, these kind of inter-meetings, you know. So perhaps if we, if we had one Tuesday at 5 next week, and then if something came up, we did something later the week. And then the week after, we had a Wednesday meeting, kind of a normal meeting. So, so we would meet for crescent matters next week on a Tuesday at 5. But if, you know, normal meeting, do we meet Tuesday the 6th, the 7th?
Tuesday at 5 sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay, so we're talking about Tuesday the 28th at 5?
Is that, is that Tuesday, is that next Tuesday, the 28th, sounds like, yeah.
Making sure.
When do we have to have our agenda up by Friday?
So Tuesday, so we have to go up by Friday at 5, I believe, if there's no, if there's no.
Well, 1:30 because then Town Hall closes.
Oh, that's right, yeah, 1:30. I think we can do that, today's, it's Wednesday night, we can get something in, and it'll, it'll be a short agenda, it'll be really just any pressing matters, and maybe something would be project COVID-19, really I think those are the matters. And then we'll, we'll, to Richard's point, we'll try to, you know, put the normal items on our, on a Wednesday meeting for the next week.
Do you want to do the comedy warrant, do you want to do the articles next Tuesday, if we meet Tuesday night, is that enough time for everyone?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, not have a budget to vote on, you know, you can probably decide a vote on which articles to include.
Okay.
Numbers to the budget. Yes, so, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Mike, does that work for you?
Yes, yeah, very much so.
Okay, alright, I'll have that on for Tuesday. Okay, so we'll do Tuesday at 5, and then we'll, we'll plan for the following Wednesday, the 6th at 7, kind of an all meeting. And then assuming nothing happens that requires us to meet again first, Friday next week. And then, you know, maybe we take it week by week, I don't know if we want to set meetings too far out. We have those set at 28th to 6th, then we can figure it out going forward from there. Okay, anything else on that? Item 18, future agenda items, does anyone have anything additional for future agenda items?
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yeah, Mr. Farrington.
Our town council has almost finished their invitation for bids for the project manager for the animal shelter.
Okay.
I'd like to present that to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, and, and that's okay for Tuesday, you think?
Should be okay for Tuesday, we're, we're gonna talk tomorrow, it should be finalized tomorrow, so, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items? One future agenda, and we have this, we have this open meeting law complaint that we'll put on the agenda from Cindy Christensen. Last meeting on Friday the 17th. It was post-proper, we posted for new meeting, we had the day before changed the or give notice that we were changing the order because we want to make sure that the police contract executive session items were heard by as many as possible, so we moved those to item 3, and we moved public comment down to, to item 5. And so apparently, according to this complaint, we'll have to look into it. We started our meeting around 12:04, actually we have, we're 12:04, and because we took those, so we took, so we started the meeting 12:04, I guess Christine thought that the public comment was gonna be around those, that time. Ended up having the public comment around 12:24 because we, we talked about, we had that executive session, but we thought it was an important matter. So there were, there was 20 minutes difference in that, so, so. And then I guess this complaint points out that we didn't include public speak on the prior two meetings. Oops, no, that's not right, because we had public comment here on the 14th, which is the meeting right before, so. So anyway, so we'll, we'll talk about this, this complaint, we'll put that, we'll put that on, it's like maybe it's not quite accurate. But we'll put that on the agenda to talk about this, we'll send it on to the town council to, to look at as well. Alright, so now we, we need to, we have some Governor Stotan matters to talk about. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the select board meeting and to go into the trustees of Governor Stotan meeting. And then we'll return back to the select board meeting to go into executive session, so I'll entertain a motion.
Reset, said adjourn.
I'm sorry, recess, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Which is to recess our meeting, go into the Governor Stotan meeting to return to the second, the select board meeting. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
And Mrs. Zul is yes, so we are, so now I will call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stotan Fund. And item 2 is a discussion of the rental assistance program. I'm gonna ask Ms. Collins to tee this one up.
Okay, so I, I wrote out a little something, I'll try to be quick. So at the last joint meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust and Housing Committee, there was a discussion about a possible need for rental assistance program. And Noreen Kearney Dolan, who is the, the fund coordinator for the Milton Residents Fund. And I actually attended the Citizens Housing and Planning Association webinar on rental assistance programs this morning. And then we talked and emailed later in the day. So the, as we've discussed before, the Milton Residents Fund already provides short-term rental assistance. And usually it requires notification from the landlord or mortgage company that people are in arrears. And so we haven't seen any uptick yet because it's early in this process. Noreen anticipates maybe May or June. However, there's recent legislation, as we all know, that prohibits landlords from, and mortgage companies from issuing notices. So it's not quite clear if that might push it out even farther or not. But she has other, other ways of being communications with these entities to see if, if people really do need this assistance. Also, banks and borrowers are being instructed and encouraged to really be in direct communication, so we're hoping that that will really help people as well. So given that we have short-term rental assistance already provided by Milton Residents Fund. She suggested that a long-term rental assistance program is the thing that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Trustees should, should look at. And that it, it was a great webinar, there was a lot of material, but she does think that there would be a, a need for some longer-term funds. And let's see, so she's going to keep us informed going forward. And part, the, the Milton Residents Fund update talks about the fact that there hasn't really, there hasn't been an uptick in requests necessarily. 10 families were served in April, it's typical, but the, the needs have been greater, multiple requests for larger amounts of money. And, and there's a lot more data that I could, could give you, but, but I know it's late, and Andy Waugh is, is waiting. There, there is assistance, and she's really well-versed in a lot of it, having actually run the RAFT program. Which is the program Residential Assistance for Families in Transition. She ran that, the, the, the piece of the program that covers Milton. But, but there, there is assistance and there's also a possible additional assistance. She has a small sort of pot of funds that she uses for people who are above the income limit that, that Milton Residents Funds uses. And that's just money from the community that can help families who meet other criteria. Say a family that has, is working two adults for jobs, still not making enough to really make ends meet. And I, I know that Katie had mentioned perhaps starting something with the United Way because they've been helping communities. And this is something that I think we might really want to consider looking into. And I can, I can send around a, a little memo that gives you sort of a better idea of what she's doing and what's available. So that's, that's what I have at the moment. Oh, and just one more thing, actually. So Governor Stotin Funds, the Milton Residents Fund has given out fifty-three thousand in gifts so far this year. And she has, Noreen has another fifty-six thousand from us and another seven from another foundation. And also that it's been generously sending in donations in grocery gift cards, which she's been able to, to give out. So we just want to thank people for that. So right now she's got some capacity and she's just going to keep us informed.
Great. Great. Other, other comments or questions from the members on the rental assistance program and the Residents Fund and the Food Pantry?
I just, Mr. Chair, I just think that that's the one entity that we can, we have a very proven track record work wise with and allocation wise, particularly under the, the guises of the will and the, and the criteria of the AG's office. So I think adding or putting there, letting them determine, I think that's a very wise decision for us right now. Very easy way for us to go without any hurdles or trips, but them decide and then we just help them move that by funding them. So I'm, I'm happy for that. Thank you, Melinda.
Do we have, do we have a sense of the Food Pantry and whether the test that we approved probably a month ago, where that they're at, and I've had a private donations, but are they in a position where they're looking for additional funds? Because my sense has been that we should probably transfer some additional monies from the Governor Stotin Fund to the Food Pantry fairly soon. I don't know, Mike Dennehy might know or I wonder if he's had any conversation. Pat probably was at our recent meeting, but, and I think at that time they were okay. But I'm just wondering if we should, you know, maybe transfer another five thousand or reach out to them and see where they're at and what, what here needs to be going forward.
Katie, does it, does it, maybe, maybe we, we ask Pat to come in on Tuesday and.
She, um.
I'm sorry, Richard.
Go ahead, but, well, no, I'm first, I'll go ahead and finish. I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, I was, that's, that was my only thought.
I, that was my, what Katie said was my intention when she came in a week ago. I, I was ready to move that night and it just seems that she seemed all right at this time. But whether we do it proactively or I think we made it pretty clear whether she needs, she can come to us. I think I had an exchange of an email with her afterwards. I think she's pretty confident, understands that.
Only contact, I, I, I actually reached back out to Pat to see how they were doing with the refrigerated space that they needed. And our police department helped us on that other day. So they actually got their dairy run because of, of our police department. So they're, they still don't have space and I, I don't know if Mike Dennehy has heard anything else. I, I, um, but I think it's a good idea just to, to check in and see. She didn't say anything at the time about needing additional funds.
I, I have not heard Madam Vice Chair, but I can certainly reach out.
Could we, if at the next time we have Governor Stotin on our agenda, please get from the treasurer or the accountant of the balance of the fund and what we've appropriated in the current fiscal year date? Because we usually have that available to us every time we have a Governor Stotin meeting with any request. I know we don't have a pending request tonight, but, but I'm really inclined to, to transfer additional funds to the Food Pantry at this point. Because I think there's going to be a real demand upon them. And there's a lot of talk about food insecurity, even Lieutenant Governor was talking quite good about that this week. So I think it's a problem statewide and we should try to be a little preemptive and proactive on that issue. If we get that information, that would be helpful. And, and the United Way that Melinda brought up, we, I forwarded some information from Winchester, Chair and the Town Administrator, then just what happens, yes, we had a resident reach out to us, Karen Brace-Horan, for the United Way, has offered to help us with that. So we should take advantage of her offer and try to jump on that quickly. I, Winchester said it was very easy to set up and it would be good if we could set that up quickly to allow our residents to support our own local nonprofits and charitable organizations.
Thank you, Member Conlon. Yes, and I did speak to the Winchester Town Administrator Lisa Wong today. Myself and Michael Kelly, the Chief Precaution Officer, are going to walk through all the paperwork on Friday. So thank you for bringing that to us. You were very helpful today.
Great. Thank you.
Katie, I'll, I'll make that motion for you. I'll make a motion to transfer five thousand dollars to, from the Governor Stotin Fund to the Milton Food Pantry.
That's fine. I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. And, 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 but we will, we'll follow up with Pat with this and see if, see if it makes sense for her to come in on Tuesday night, Tuesday evening. Okay. All right. Anything else on this? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's made?
Second.
And seconded. Roll call, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah.
Zulis, yes. All right. So now we are back in our meeting of the Select Board. And we've ended our recess from the Select Board's meeting. And I will make a motion to enter into this session, discuss the following business, not to return to open session, believing that having such discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position. First is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Milton Patrol Officers Unit and sent to discuss strategy with respect to collective, collective bargaining, specifically the Milton Superior Officers Unit. Do I have a second?
Second.
This has been made in second and this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Zulis, yes. So we are going into executive session. We will see you again next on Tuesday at five P M, Tuesday, April twenty eighth. Thank you very much. And Hillary, can you guide us into how, into how we will be going into executive session?